Because I can't imagine life for other children without the service in our community. On a personal note, I wanted to talk about the library. My children have excelled academically and, for as long as I remember, I remember taking them to the library. That's where they first picked out their books and learned to read, and I can't imagine them being where they are without the library. So I think that's the thing most near and dear to my heart. The other thing I want to point out is, I may not know enough about all the numbers and all the budget and details because I think there's a lot to gather and understand, but what I do see is that all the communities around us are hurting. Everybody is in the same boat, some in worse condition than we are. And my question is, when it came time for a millage vote for the library in other communities, they stepped up to the plate, some of them having less than what we have. And my question is, why didn't we? What is, why do these communities value it and we don't? And the ones that didn't vote it are close to not having a library like us, or others don't have it. So if you really value the education of your children, and I'm talking to the public at large, and the property values of your homes, if you don't have children necessarily, I support the millage and would urge the community at large to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, before you start, let me call the last five people. Christian, you want to speak again? Dan Brake signed up again, and Thomas Burke. So those people will come up in that order. Mr. Savage?
Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening.
Two years ago, four members of this council, or was it the previous council, supported a resolution to close the library. And for two years, continued to threaten to close the library. Yet, during that time, you continued to support the Transit Center. There is overwhelming support for a library, but there is little or no support for a Transit Center or a $2 million intersection facelift. My concern is the wasteful spending. Whether it be city, state, or federal tax money, it is still public money. And I think a lot of people are very concerned as to how much the federal government is spending. The Transit Center debate is not over until we have had an accurate accounting and accountability and official word that the city involvement is finished. Madam Mayor, you and Councilwoman Kirwin have indicated from time to time that the Transit Center has cost the city of Troy no money. You have criticized other people for spreading false information regarding the cost of the Transit Center. I have asked many times for an accounting. Mr. Haralak asked for an accounting. And again, I ask, how much has the city of Troy paid for engineering fees and studies, lobbyists and consultants, staff time, including legal departments and department time and expenses, promotional costs, brochures, et cetera, et cetera? It's my understanding that these costs were paid by the city. And I would like to know in detail how much each of these items were. And who was the person that was first brought this ill-conceived, ill-fated scheme to the city of Troy? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Dan Brake.
Good evening, again.
Good evening.
Mayor, like a schoolyard bully, you're still trying to drag the people of Troy to where you want to go rather than leading us to where we want to go. You carefully manipulated the recent community roundtable meetings. You manipulated the expensive taxpayer-funded $22,000 survey that has since been revealed to really be an illegal, public-funded campaign tool. You manipulated the $200,000 ICMA study so that in every case, the people were only presented with your choice of continued city service with more taxes versus reduced city services with the same taxes. Never in all this process have we ever been allowed to say, "It's the price we're objecting to, not the services." Whether it's our groceries, our clothes, our cars, whatever we buy, we are always making price choices right along with the choices of what we're buying. But you come along and try to insist that the price choice does not exist when it comes to buying the city services that we desire, and that's absurd. Clearly, someone has made a price choice when we learn that our police services cost three times as much as the police services in Rochester Hills. That's $27 million versus $9 million. A price choice has been made when we learn our city employees' benefits, pension benefits, cost 25 cents for each dollar spent on pay. And nearly, the overall benefit is nearly three times as generous as the benefits the taxpayers will receive who work outside of government. You persist in telling us your city employees are paid competitively, but you refuse to publish a list like the Troy School District does to show us the pay rate, the pension cost, the health care benefit, et cetera. And I'm calling for that again. You insist that the city has to have an expensive special election on August 2, if things go as they seem to, just to still one more time ask for tax money you claim you need. Yet, this is after you swore in court in the Kempin case that the taxpayers could not afford this very same special election cost, when you wanted to wiggle out of letting the people vote on the Kempin petition language. And that was language that simply said you had to pay for a library by adjusting those price choices I was just referring to. So now you're going to twice purge yourself by adding to that problem with the police department, one-third would be laid off, to paying for the election that we couldn't afford. It would be dreadful and a waste if we went forward with that $90,000 ballot question and didn't use up all the space on that ballot page. I happen to know the printer does not charge you more.
Frank, I have to stop here.
You have my list in front of you. You have other things you might add to the ballot?
We have that. Thank you. Yes, we'll hear from Thomas Burke.
From the, I think it was a straw vote at last week's meeting, it's clear that there's five council votes for whatever ballot proposal, 1, 2, 10, 100, you choose to put on. The question I'd like to at least bring some common sense and hope to save a few dollars is, can we avoid this ridiculous special election in August? City management, Mr. Zurlag today responded to councilperson or residence questions about, how do we justify this? And just to be clear, I mean, it's buried in council agenda or wherever, the question is, does the city get the same dollars if they put the millage on and it passes in August or November? The answer is yes. It's going to go on a winner tax bill, and the cash has to come in, will come in the same time and the same amount. So therefore, that doesn't justify an August election. Since the cash comes in in December, the general fund's going to have to pay to keep the library open until December, whether it's an, the election is August or November. Once again, no reason to spend $90,000 in August. The only reason that's put forward is if it doesn't pass. So if the five council people think that it's not going to pass, and therefore you can close the library in August and save money, if the thought that there's even a chance it couldn't pass, save the $90,000 and close the library now. That would be the common sense approach. So common sense would say, of those three alternatives, if it passes, passing it in November, when a large number of Troy voters will already be at the poll, would seem to be the common sense approach. Funding that makes no difference. It's still a six-month funding from the general fund. If it's going to close, close it now. Lastly, I'd say, I was surprised to see that the, this ballot proposal in any case, even though it'll be on a winner bill, will really be a pull of Clinton. And by that, I mean, it's really a retroactive tax increase back to July of this year. Didn't know we could do that, but that is what's being proposed, that the general fund will be reimbursed. So could we at least have a little bit of common decency towards the pocketbook of the city of Troy and just save a measly $92,000? Thank you.
Council will take a five-minute break. No, well, council will take a five-minute break. I may have one. Council's back in session. When we left, James Griggs wanted to speak.
Thank you. My name's James Griggs. I'm a Troy resident for 26 years. And I'm really kind of upset with the chances of trying to go for another tax increase. So far this year, there's been five questions on tax increase, and it's been voted down five times. You had a gentleman here earlier tonight dressed in all blue, and he talked about when the school board tried to pass a tax increase to build Troy Eye. It was voted on by the people in hard times, not quite as hard as now. It was defeated. So they put it up for a vote a second time. It was defeated the second time by a wider margin. They put it up for a third time. It was defeated by a wider margin. Then they said they were going to do it anyhow, and we've had a recall. The first recall of the school board members, there was four of them that we recalled in the history of Troy. In collecting those recall petitions, it was nine out of 10 houses signed it. So it was significant, and a lot of us still remember that. Anyhow, we don't need any more empty houses. We don't need Troy passing, people passing by Troy to buy a house in another community because it's cheaper over there. Most people clearly want the library open, but we've got to find a way to cut spending. Why does Rochester Hills, with, without the golden corridor of tax base, how can they get things done and we can't? It seems to me we've got to tighten the belt. We've got a pool, this outside aquatic center, really nice, but back when the mayor, Pryor, was in office, he questioned the spending on that because it would increase our cost. I'm saying, until things get better, why don't we mothball that swimming pool complex? Because 300 or 400 yards away, we have another great pool complex in the community center. You could have, you could have your swimming in there, and when it's lightning out and raining, they can still swim there. They can have their parties there. It's got a big deck. And just mothball the outdoor center until times get better, three or four years maybe, and keep, take that money and put it on the library. The train station to nowhere, to me baffles me. Birmingham had this beautiful train station just off Maple there. It was a beautiful two-story facility. They sold because there's, nobody uses the trains. Back 100 years ago, they used the inner urban railcar system. That went everywhere. That folded because people didn't use it. They had the railroad cars. That folded.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs.
Thank you.
Mr. Witt, did you want to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and council members, really, this evening, I wanted to share a few perspectives. Let's call them facts. I think they, I think they're facts. First, the overwhelming majority of the residents of Troy want to keep the library open. Second, the citizens of Troy do not believe that all has been done and, that can be done in terms of cost reduction. And so, an increase in a millage is not justified. This failure to do all that could be done is, of course, applies to a number of different areas. Certainly applies, in the case of personnel, to wages; in some cases, benefits in most. Concerning benefits, just saying we've changed this arrangement, let's say retiring medical for new hires, that doesn't cut it. That means you get some relief in about 50 years. It also doesn't cut it that we settled a recent contract in which the premium contribution for health care, the requirement is 3% of the premium. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services says that in 2010, the average contribution to the premium required by participating employees is 27%. So you're 1/9th of the way. Also with regard to this, this situation, it's also true with respect to certain consolidations that should be undertaken. Not with respect to all departments, but certainly some. Obviously, some of the functions are critical and wouldn't be subject to consolidation, others would. It's also true with respect to certain expensive capital projects. We've, many have referred to the initiative with regard to a costly project that's, nobody wants, the train, the train station to nowhere, as it's been referred to. So again, the residents just don't believe you need the tax increase, given the lack of sufficient change in operating expense. Next fact, a 1.9 mil increase initiative was soundly defeated just 15 months ago, almost 2 to 1. Next fact, you have proposed a 0.7 mil increase for the library. Now I understand that Mayor Pro Temp wants to add another 1 mil increase in terms of a proposal for the ballot. That's a total of 1.7. So last year, it was 29% increase. The new one, and I brought my calculator, if you don't believe me, but it's, believe me, it's a 20, it's the equivalent of a 26%. Now, I realize you'll say, this is dedicated, that a year and a year and three months ago is not dedicated. The point is, the dollars are the dollars. So if a 29% increase was soundly defeated, how possibly is the, the equivalent of a 26% increase going to be passed? Just doesn't make sense. Next fact, you're not going to succeed with the 27% when the 29% was, and finally, finally, anybody who would support a 1.7 obviously does not want the library to remain open. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up to speak. Council, do you have any response to public comment, or do you wish to go to postpone items?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
I made some notes as people asked questions, and I know that...
Is our mic on? I'm having trouble hearing tonight. Okay.
I know that some of this is redundant. First, and this is the third week in a row that your State of the City address of last year has been referred to by public comment. There was no State of the City address last year, as I recall. Thank you. There, the zoning ordinance was passed here at this table, and there has been, according to our planning department, there has been a significant increase in interest in doing things, building and rebuilding in Troy. Again, the master land use plan keeps being referred to as, well, we didn't know about that. That was passed a year ago by the Planning Commission. The city council does not have authority over the master land use plan, only the implementation of the zoning that influences it. So that's been done. I would like management to comment on why we can't charge, or why we aren't because we can. Charging people the additional for their water, and why are we taking it out of fund balance, and what fund balance is that? I'd like that clarified, please.
On the water bill? Thank you. Mr. Zurlag?
Sure. I'll start and have Mr. Lamarrado finish, but the, the water bill is not part of someone's tax bill. It's called an enterprise fund, and it's predicated on the amount of water and sewage used. It's, it's a volumetric, if you will, or it's based, it's a certain rate based on the volume of water used. It's, comes out of the city of Detroit. Our water system comes out of the city of Detroit, and every year, we take a look at what the costs are. Most of them are, are pass-through costs, which we identify in the budget document, and adjustments are made accordingly. And if Mr. Lamarrado wants to add to that, feel free, John.
Madam Mayor and City Council, the only thing I'll add to that is, there are no general fund dollars involved with the water fund. It's a separate enterprise fund. The water charges stay in that fund, are used for the operations and maintenance of the fund.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Mayor Pro Temp Kirwin?
I do have a few. I appreciate the corrections from Councilmember Beltrami. There also a mention of a number of other different funds, as if they could be. We have three people who attend many meetings. Again, there was reference to DDA. If you just did away the DDA, that money could be rolled into the general fund. Is that factual?
No.
Okay. The Transit Center, that could just be rolled into the general fund. Is that factual?
No.
Okay. We also had this piece about water on our golf courses. This is an opportunity perhaps to talk about the water on Sylvan Glen.
Water on Sylvan Glen is drafted from the retention pond and drains that we have that run through the golf course.
That should be a claim. That's water on-site that's reused, right there on that site. So that isn't an additional expense.
It's not a metered, it's not metered from the city of Detroit. It's our own internal system.
There was a suggestion that we could stop talking about the budget until we got the numbers right. Tell me again when the state is required to submit a budget? Is it October 1st? So if we had to wait until we had those numbers right, would we be able to stay in compliance with our fiscal year?
No.
We can't. So we really have to work within the fluidity. It's not right, and that's why we're required under GASB to do an amendment mid-year, as we do. So we do that and correct that. I was interested that it was mentioned that we should be creative and productive, find ways to cut spending. What are some creative and productive ways that management has realigned what government does?
Briefly, we have privatized the entire building department. We went from a, we went from a department that was consuming general fund tax dollars to the tune of about $5 million, when you took into consideration the amount of permit fees that came in against departmental costs. We did not raise building permit fees, and instead of having a $5 million debt, we now received 20% of all costs received on building permits. So the building department function went from a consumer of general fund monies to a donor to the general fund. It'll be about...
So you have privatized, you have brought in revenue, whether it's through fleet and other spaces?
Yes, we have.
You have worked collaboratively and regionally with other governments?
We have.
You have cut staff?
141 people from our heart, our heartland.
Staff have combined... Staff have combined jobs.
Yes.
And so on and so forth. So, there's been a number of that. Are we continuing to tighten the belt?
Yes.
There was a question that, gee, if we just mothball the Aquatic Center, does the Aquatic Center make money for us?
It depends on the amount of days that we have that are nice days. If we have a nice summer, we make money. If we have a bad summer, we lose money. But, again, that's an enterprise fund, and the amount of monies that are plus or minus our expenditures are close.
So, it really has nothing to do with the general fund? Last year, I believe, we made some money.
I think we did, yes.
Okay. In terms of something that I am concerned about was, we received late this afternoon from the city manager's office, an attempt to address a whole series of questions that I don't know when they came in. Did they come in today?
Yes.
From council members? Some 60-some pages, as I think Councilmember Howarlek mentioned. And I received that late this afternoon. Did you all receive it late this afternoon? During public comment, I hear a reference that someone has received that same pile. So, my question is, how did that happen?
I have no idea. I don't know.
I see Mr. Fleming shaking his head.
I have no idea.
Councilmember Beltrami?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Did they go on the web at the same time they were sent to us?
I've got to ask that question of Mrs. Bertfahlme.
Bertfahlme?
No idea.
No, the items did not go on the web. Typically, they go on the web the following morning. All of the late submittals were pasted on the board at approximately 4:30?
4:30, 4:40.
About quarter to 5:00, and they'll go on the web tomorrow.
Thank you. So, then, my question would be for Councilmember Howarlek. Are those then forwarded on to TCU, or just particularly Mr. Burke?
Mayor?
I don't know.
Mayor?
Councilman Howarlek?
Yeah. I think that this is actually inappropriate use this time of the city council meeting, but to answer the question, do you ever respond to people that send you emails? Do you?
Have me answer the question.
Do you ever respond to people that send you emails? And I would actually ask staff, is this a public document subject to the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes.
Is it? Yes. So, that's my answer. Anybody who wants anything can request this from any of us, the city clerk, or they can go to the bulletin board.
My concern in all this is that the provision for council members to ask questions of the administration used to be that we just do it at the meeting, and we'd come up with a question, and then staff would give an answer. If they didn't have an answer, we'd get it at the next meeting. Then, we started this where people could ask ahead. Now, I think, I believe that some questions are asked by council members that are asked of them by other people, and it consumes a great deal of the staff time on the council agenda day, which I think they have a better use of time. Not that they shouldn't answer council questions, they should. I think that it sometimes is done in a way that does not serve us well. The other response to public comment is that someone mentioned about we don't have enough concessions going on. In tonight's agenda, there is, for council to approve, two ratifications of two employee union groups. There is another one that will come to us after we get the actuarial information, and there is the last one of all of them that we will get when that one is resolved. So, we have been getting concessions from the employee groups as requested. So, again, the comments that we haven't been doing that, we have been doing that. Any other responses to public comment? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just had a quick point of clarification. I think the same person that indicated that there had been not a single discussion about concessions also indicated that we were spending $800,000 on a pond behind City Hall and couldn't understand why we can't fund the library. And I just wanted to point out something, and I guess if I could just get some confirmation, that we did actually discuss this in the budget sessions. It's on page 150 of our budget document, that that particular project, as included in the proposed budget, is contingent on the receipt of grant funds. So, I think that that clears that up, and I just want to make sure that I understand that correctly, and perhaps I'm not mistaken.
You're not mistaken.
Okay. And then, the other question back to the Transit Center, just so that it's clear to the public, the money that's in the budget for the Transit Center is also grant funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, we're not utilizing general fund money that we could be using to save the library to instead fund the Transit Center. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want some clarification then. In terms of the council questions, I guess, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to have this discussion, I too agree that it's very important that we should be able to ask questions. We all think a little bit differently. We all notice different things when we're reviewing the documents, and I think it's very important that we have an opportunity to get all the answers and all of the information that we need for ourselves to make a decision here at the council table, as that's our responsibility. I guess we've been doing it this way since I've been on council, so I don't know if anyone else agrees, that maybe we should just have a discussion about a timeline. Because I was just a little bit disheartened to see at 5:30, when I was trying to leave my office, so I could come here, that I got a 67-page document full of questions and minutia about things that we've been reviewing since we got this giant book. And I do think that it's important to ask those questions, and I would like us to all have the opportunity to get that information and maybe pick up on something new that we didn't notice ourselves. So, I don't know if it's worth having a discussion about when it would be appropriate to have those questions, and if we were expecting answers by the time we have a council meeting. Because this, I think, does the staff a disservice. They obviously have a wealth of information, and I'm confident that every question that we pose to them, they can answer. But I think when they're placed under the gun, not only are they preparing for a meeting and handling all the other things that they have to do on a day-to-day basis, but to get these types of questions, and not just these, and I'm not singling anyone else out, I'm sure that I've done it as well. So, I am not at all above being a part of this. But, you know, I think it does both the council members and the staff and the citizens, it would maybe benefit from having this information a disservice. It seems like we're just pushing it to the limit, and it seems to be getting closer and closer to that limit, you know, whenever we have a meeting. So, I don't know if anyone else feels the same way, but maybe it might be helpful if we just had a clear-cut, you know, deadline, I guess. And if we wanted to have information by the time we have a council meeting, that perhaps we would all be on the same page as to when that question needs to be submitted. So, that's just my two cents. And if there's no agreement, or everyone seems to think that the way that we've been doing it works fine, then that's fine, too.
Mayor?
Further comments? Councilman Howarlek?
You know, well, I respect my colleagues' comments. I think the issue for me has more to do with what I expect to be in the packet we actually get. Most of the questions that I had, I don't think I should have to ask for. For example, if we have a collective bargaining agreement, I should be able to actually see the agreement. So, and if you only want to provide, and I understand that the final agreement comes upon ratification by both parties, so what I need to see, and I think it's something that, as the fiduciaries of this city, that we should be expected to review as well, not just for me to see it, but for all of us to read it, is the existing collective bargaining agreement, as well as the changes to it. Because then, we can understand what it is that we're approving. So, I asked for that for both of the employee groups that have contracts before us this evening. I had hoped that would be part of the agenda. It wasn't, so I had to ask for it. The agenda was given to us, by the way, on Friday evening, so perhaps I could have sent it in three hours earlier, my request, on Monday morning. Also, with respect to all of these questions that we all submitted, I think they were very relevant to this evening's city council meeting. And I think in order for us to do our jobs, we should not be penalized for doing our homework. The more you look into things, the more questions you have. And it would certainly be cumbersome if they were all submitted at the table here. And likewise, if I didn't have, or if we didn't have an adequate response and didn't feel that we had the information necessary to make a decision, that would actually bog things down. So, I think it has more to do with the fact that we need to have certain pieces of information included in the agenda without having to ask for it. And other things, I think, that are not necessarily relevant to the meeting on that day can certainly be put off.
Further discussion on response to public comment? Then, we'll move on to postponed items. There was an agenda item on the budget?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Before you skip over boards and committee appointments...
Wait.
That's what's next. There are none scheduled.
According to the agenda, it says response to public comment, and the next item is postponed items.
And there are no postponed items.
We just postponed one tonight.
Well, if a five-minute break was what you're giving me to review Councilman Howarlek's proposal?
No. No, you indicated that it would come after public comment and after the break.
And the break. Okay.
And so, I'm just bringing it up because that's what it was postponed to.
Okay. So, that's what I thought when you called a five-minute break instead of the standard 10.
We actually had 10. Okay. So, we're on the postponed item.
Question for Councilman Howarlek, if I might.
Councilwoman Beltrami?
Martin, you added in both $100 increase, $100,000 increase in local contributions and $80,000 in fines and forfeitures, in addition to about 1, what, 1.9 in fund balance? Is that where you're getting that money?
To me, I don't know. Mayor?
Councilman Howarlek?
My intent here was to mimic the $2,260,000 that is approximately the operating expenditures necessary to continue the library at approximately the same level of operation now. The $100,000, I picked up from Resolution B. You know, I looked at Resolution B to ascertain the numbers that should be in the appropriate places. And there's $100,000, and when you look at the differences between Resolution A, there's $100,000 in contributions local. There's 20 in fines and forfeitures, which is approximately a quarter of the $80,000 for the year. Actually, it's exactly a quarter. And then, the reappropriation is essentially your plug.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comments or questions on the postponed item?
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
For Councilman Howarlek, is there a reason why you didn't forward this to the rest of us, except for Councilman Fleming?
Mayor?
Councilman Howarlek?
I didn't want to have to read through all of that in this. I knew I had a second, to tell you the truth. The changes, I mean, I could have amended it here at the table. That's another option. I printed it out. I read the whole thing. The only thing, my intent that I'm trying to do here is everything that I've been saying that I believe in, which is, we need to continue to provide full funding for the library, and if there's going to be a mill levy request, it needs to be general operating, and it needs to be in November.
Councilman Slater?
I can accept that. I just, you know, when you send it to one person and you don't send it to the others, it looks like you're trying to give it to us at the last minute so that we don't have time to look at it. So, I'll accept what you said, but I think I'll have to disagree about how we should go about it. Thanks.
Actually, the procedure would be that Councilman Howarlek would send it to the city manager, and the city manager would send it to us, because we're not allowed to send an item to each other all at the same time under the Open Meetings Act. Okay. Further discussion on the postponed item?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming indicated first, yes.
Yeah. Just to reiterate, I got this probably between 5:30 and 6 o'clock, and Councilman Howarlek called me and told me to look at it. And my, he was, this was so hot off the press for him that he asked me to just verify the numbers. Could I go through and just check the numbers? He wanted another set of eyes on it. So, I took the time to go through, got up from dinner, and went down and checked the numbers to verify that they did add. And when I did that, I just made my own notes to the side as to what the changes were. Okay. But I probably got it and looked at it 6 o'clock or after today, so it's not something I studied all day long. Okay?
Further, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have a question, I guess, for Councilman Howarlek. You indicated that the three-year budget was not attached to this because you felt that it needed to be more thoroughly looked through, analyzed, and I guess I'm not quite sure what that means. Does that mean we wouldn't actually be approving a three-year budget then, today, just the one year, and you feel like you need additional time, meaning past today's meeting sometime into the future, to bring that forward? Or you just wanted to do them in two separate resolutions today?
Mayor?
Councilman Howarlek?
I think we need to incorporate into that three-year budget a realistic expectation of how the future is going to play out. And if that includes wage concessions that are not in that budget, since it is an estimate, if it includes, if it's going to include any sort of a contribution for the defined benefit or the defined contribution plans, that is going to change based on actuarial evaluations or changes, again, to the contracts or agreements, we need to incorporate that. And likewise, we need to, I believe, we need to have better explanation of what appears to be the most recent change in the taxable value in the year 2015, I believe, based on something that had been submitted to us by management in the proposed library budget if additional funding is created. The gist of it is, I believe that we need to have more discussions about it. If it's at the table, I would like it separated, because, you know, I support the resolution that I put on the table, but I don't support the back two years, because I believe that we're not there yet as far as the work that we need to be doing, doing to get it more accurate and closer to where we're coming. The problem that we have is, you know, if you look at any three-year period going all the way back to 2003, any of those three years, there's been a budgetary usage of fund, designated, unreserved fund balance, far in excess of what's in the proposed three-year budget here. And likewise, the utilization of that actual to budget is enormous. In other words, we budgeted a huge number, and we only used a small amount of it. And that seems to be the premise that we're using today, not necessarily today, today, but here at this city council, to close the library, or to even bring up the closure of the library. Because I would bring it to you that if that was the premise, then we should have closed the library in 2003.
Madam Mayor?
Further discussion on the postponement? Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the May 12th letter that we got from Chief Mayor. I want to thank you for that letter regarding the summary budget comparison, physical year 2011, 12 to 2010, 11. And I've gone through that. He did a very good job of explaining, but as I go through this and see, you've made great strides, you know, this department has, in taking cost out. For instance, the overtime hours have reduced from 2007, '08 to 2010, '11, actual 14,928 hours, a 41% overtime reduction. The budget reflects a reduction of 17 and 1/2 heads from 2008, '09 to 2011, '12. So, significant reductions there. We've taken out some costs that we've typically covered for the community for some programs that we've had. Also, it's in this report, it shows where historically, every year, you had excess money left at the end of the year in the police budget. You did that intentionally, I believe, because of unforeseen things, things you cannot predict, a major catastrophe, events that you have to have extra police coverage for and so forth. For instance, in 2008, 2009, your expenditures were under budget by $610,000. 2009, '10, you're under budget by $473,000. We all got this. This is something we've got to believe on Friday, you know? 2010, '11... 2010, '11, this year we're down $789,000 estimated that we're going to come in under budget. So that's our philosophy of budgeting, the way we've always done in the past. I think, and based upon the comments I've read in here and the budget meetings I participated in, I think we all know that we do have extra money in the police department budget for 2011, 2012. The question is, how much? We know that there are things we're working on. We're going to talk about tonight concessions we've already received. There are some things still happening. So the bottom line is, we really don't know here, sitting at the council, and it's been alluded to tonight by at least one of the speakers, I believe, and we've talked about it in our own meetings, what the real expenditures are going to be in the police department. But we are going the right direction. The community needs to know that there are costs being taken out, there are concessions being made, and they're real, they're legitimate, but they're not all reflected in the budget. The question is, how much? We're talking about this. It could be throughout, it could be between $1 million and $2 million. That's my estimation, based upon what I've seen of the budget. Nobody really knows now. I don't think Mr. Lamorato can project. He could do it better than me. But the point is, there is money sitting in the police department budget that we don't anticipate spending this year that could be diverted, but we want to be cautious about doing that. But I think every one of us in this council knows that there's extra money there. The question is, how much? And it's historic the way we budget it.
Well, added to that factor that the ICMA report suggested that we not cut out four of the police officers that is in the original recommendation. And so that is a sizable amount of money that we have to look at what's going to happen. So the monies that you're contending are extra monies in the police budget may be taken up by that, and we haven't resolved that factor. Any other discussion of the postponement of the budget resolution that was postponed until this time?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Bellamy.
Another question for my colleague, if I might. You're proposing a significant use of fund balance, and I don't disagree with you that. We always seem to budget a greater use of fund balance than we actually use. But I also think that that's how Troy was able to cut their millage rate to the citizens three times over the last 10 years and still maintain until this year high-quality services. But what's the plan for the sustained funding? Is it in your mind always out of fund balance? What's the plan for, if you want to keep the library open beyond June 30 of 2012? This does that. And you said that you preferred a millage increase if there was to be one in November. But what's your plan for the sustained funding?
Mayor.
Councilman Haralak.
A couple different things here. One is that, if I can just back up a second and say that this resolution on the table for the first year does provide total funding for the library.
I know.
And you could actually say, using the terms that some of you on my left have said, you could call it 12 months of bridge funding, if you will. I don't believe in the herky-jerky openness, close that thing. But to directly answer your question, that really speaks to the issue of why I believe that we're not done with 2013 and 2014 yet. Because we need to have the updated information. We need to incorporate the actual performance of the pension fund. We need to have the correct and most up-to-date numbers, and we need to have that actuarial report to do that. We also need to incorporate in any concessions that the unions may be giving so that we can protect those jobs, say, for example, in the police department, and so that we can actually have a comprehensive budget. In addition, and, you know, in addition, I have spoken to you in the past, say, for example, last week, that we need to have a 10% pay and total pay and benefit concession. And we've had this discussion in the past that we're not going to include in that 10% concession healthcare, vacation, or sick time. And as far as I'm concerned, that's missing a major piece. In addition, we need to actually look and see how we can streamline the management of the city. As a matter of fact, I spent quite a bit of time over the last two days reviewing Sterling Heights' operation, and they actually compare very favorably to us. They have a full-service fire department, which cost them $18.4 million. And that would actually, so if you want to compare us to them, you have to adjust our mill levy to that and see where we stand. They have a library that's operating at $2.5 million a year, including books acquisition, and they have full programming. We don't, okay? And I can go on and on, but we need to properly benchmark ourselves, set goals and achieve them. That's the angst that I have with the entire process since it began, what was it, two years ago, is that we're not setting goals or benchmarks and goals to achieve those benchmarks. And that's really where I stand on this. You know, then there's also the issue, again, you know, there are lots of questions and not enough answers. You know, we had this discussion last week about the 108 computers, and we're going to spend $300,000 on an internal service charge. If that's the way we want to do it, then maybe we need to, maybe we need to have a nonprofit organization run the library because I can assure you that we don't need to spend $300,000 on computers. Why are we spending it? Because it's absorbing costs across the cities, the city government. You know, I don't know how much you want to get into this, but my point is that on a budgetary basis, we're sitting at 22.3% fund balance. We've only utilized $750,000 of fund balance in the last three years, ending June 30 in about a month here, based on the projected basis. So to say that we don't have reserves to keep this thing going while we actually make those changes, all I'm asking is for us to use updated, correct information and to make some streamlining available in the city government, consistent with what we said we'd do, but not necessarily what we actually did. We did some of it, but we need to complete that.
Okay, further discussion of the postponement? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, then on the, is it a resolution? Oh, we need another resolution? No, a resolution on the budget item that was proposed.
Councilmember Haralak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
McGinnis?
No.
Slater?
No.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Bellamy?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion fails. I move that we postpone the Resolution B on the agenda on the budget until after we have the vote on I-4, I-4 and I-4A. Move by the Chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we postpone Resolution B until we have discussion. Discussion on the item? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bellamy?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Haralak?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-4.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Bellamy.
Before you proceed, appointments to boards and committees.
Yes, I did skip over boards and committees because there were none scheduled.
And there are none scheduled. However, when the LFA met last week, Dan Hunter was there from the county. The county has always had a voting representative. And so because he was not appointed by you, he was not allowed to vote. And Micah Damschek needs to be replaced. I would encourage you to find those appointees and appoint them as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did inquire about that, with Mr. Lamorato, and I talked about it several times. It just hadn't come as an agenda item yet. But I know, we'll take care of it, yes, because that. And then I understand also that on Brownfield redevelopment, there's an opening. So those two need to come back to us so that we can take care of that. Appreciate that. Okay, on I-4, I move the resolution, and I'll read it as follows. And resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves replacement on the August 2, 2011 election, the following ballot question. A, approval of City of Troy Public Library Operating Millage Proposal. City Council would be authorized to levy 0.7 mills for dedicated library funding with the successful passage of the following question. Shall the City of Troy levy new additional millage of 0.7 mills against all taxable property for a five-year period of time, 2011 through 2015 inclusive, for the dedicated purpose of operating and maintaining the library? 0.7 mills are equal to 70 cents on each $1,000 of taxable value. If approved, the additional millage levied would raise approximately $2,900,000 in 2011, the first year it's levied. Millage revenue would be dispersed to the city for library purposes. Of this amount, state law requires the capture of approximately $3,383 for Local Development Finance Authority, excuse me, $50,020 for Downtown Development Authority and $129 for Brownfield redevelopment authority purposes. This proposal is authorized under Section 6 of Article 9 of the Michigan Constitution. Yes, no?
Support.
Move by the Chair, supported by Councilman Haralak.
Mayor.
Excuse me, Councilman Slater. That's a Freudian slip.
Mayor.
Yes, and I wanted to indicate, Mrs. Bloom, did I do something incorrect in reading it?
No, Mayor, but in reading the information that was submitted today, I believe that the 2.9 figure in here needs to be substituted with a new figure of 3,114,125.
That's on?
The front page.
Today's, the afternoon things, or did the other ones? Where is that here? Pardon?
The front page.
Okay. Oh, yes, sorry. I'll substitute that for the $2,900,000, excuse me. I want to explain for those that are questioning about why the extra wording in the ballot question is not shorter. Under state statute, we are required to do the capturing for Local Development Finance Authority, Downtown Development, and Brownfield Development Authority. And it's placed in this wording in the ballot language to meet that standard. Mrs. Bloom, did you want to add to that?
No, just, Mayor, procedurally, you need to probably go through the process to make the formal amendment to substitute in that number. So just wanted to make sure that that gets done.
All right. I amend the number in the resolution to substitute for $2,900,000, the figure 3,114,125. Do I have support?
I'll second it and get it on the table.
Move by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we amend the resolution to insert the corrected figure. Discussion of the amendment? The vote on the amendment of insertion of the dollars, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bellamy?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Haralak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Discussion on the main motion.
Mayor.
Councilman Haralak?
The, I want to thank management for actually creating a spreadsheet here so we could see a kind of a pro forma revenue and expenditures, and also giving us an idea of what, you know, what different mill levies come close to where we are, if you will, today. My question for my colleagues is, last week, there was a discussion about making the millage requests equal to what is needed. I believe Councilman Slater said something along the lines of, ask for what you need. And the spreadsheet that was created said that we needed, well, I believe there was a spreadsheet and there was a memo, I believe it was either .66 or .68 mills. I'm curious as to the, I know it doesn't sound like much, but I'm curious as to the difference there in the resolution.
The difference in the resolution is because with the drop in valuation over that period of years, not only in residential but commercial and industrial, and that the .7 mills was a dollar amount that would provide library funding at a level not as high as we've had with the full-service, award-winning library, but if, at a level that we could operate a library on the 55 hours with providing many of the things that people are requesting with the library. So that is why that figure is included. Anyone else feel free to indicate. Councilman Haralak?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this packet of information we received this afternoon. And so there's a question from Councilwoman Bellamy. I'll just kind of read the basic pieces here. So she says, if you don't mind, library millage proposal. I thought that although we used .7 mills for the discussion, the direction was to figure out what the rate would be that would provide enough funding for $2.7 million in library funding for five years. When I did the math, using your $2.9 million yield from .7 mills, I found 4.143 million equals 1 mill. So getting the average, excuse me, so getting an average of $2.7 million may take as much as .74 mills. If we stretch it to six years, dot, 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 not sure what number would that be? Response, five years, .66 mills, six years, .68 mills, 55 hours per week library, referred to the dedicated millage chart, which was emailed today, which should have been attached to the agenda and is also attached to this document. So I believe that my question is still valid.
Mr. Lamorato?
Sure, Mayor and Council. The resolution that was put forward was to ask for .70 mills. I then, we then took a look at the overall other revenue sources that the library would generate, which are not in the current year's library budget. And looking at that, we gave you information that says, really, for the five-year period of time, .66 mills would probably be sufficient to handle that, considering our reduction in taxable value over that time. Also on that chart is what .70 mills would generate. That's a $770,000 over and above what the .66 mills would generate over that five-year period of time. That information was given to Council, so if you would select to, you have a 55-hour library, you want it more hours, you want it more money in the selection budget, in the periodical budget, that could be used there. It would take .66 mills to cover our existing library operation with the $425,000 for periodicals and so forth. So that information is all spelled out there over the five years, the various revenue sources. We gave you both to let you know exactly. You asked for .70 mills, that's what was in the resolution. .66 mills would probably work. You know, .70 mills, which is called for, and you have additional funding for the periodicals and books and so forth, or possibly increase in programming or hours of the library operation.
And my reasoning for continuing with it, I did read all the information. I did figure that with going with .7 mills is, in my estimation, to replace the amounts of monies that are needed in the materials that are ordered. For example, the library now is, we cut that budget in half, which meant there were a lot of things that people were used to being able to get at the a lot of things that people were used to being able to get at the library, the latest periodicals, the latest books, every, all of that. That budget was cut in half. So they're getting less. I thought that keeping to 55 hours and providing for more materials would serve the citizens better. We can't, in my estimation, unless Council wants to, if they wanted to go back to the full-service, award-winning library that we had, we'd need more than .7 mills to do that. And so I thought this was a compromised position. But I do think that it's important for the citizenry and the business people and others that use the library from other communities, because, yes, they do come and use ours, that we have those materials. And I thought it important that we have the funds to do that over a five-year period. Further discussion of the resolution? Councilwoman Slater?
Well, I still hold true that we should ask for what we need. .7 doesn't seem that we're asking for more than we need, but if reducing it to .66, like 4/100 of a mill, would get Councilman Howrak to support this, I would be happy to propose that.
Further discussion of the motion?
Sure.
Councilwoman Fleming?
What is the deadline to get this language approved, to get this on the ballot?
Tonight?
Tonight?
Well, because this is our last meeting.
Right, this is the last scheduled meeting. This is the last scheduled meeting that you have. It is potentially possible to call a special meeting, although there would have to be a lot of alignment in getting it done. And absolute deadline, I would defer to Ms. Bartholomew, but I believe it's next week, next Monday.
The deadline is the 23rd, next, I believe it's the 20, it's next Monday.
But it has to be at the county.
I have to get it to the county.
You have to take it there, yes. Further discussion? Councilwoman Fleming?
Yeah, again, I wish we would delay this until November. And also have language for another option on the November ballot. And that would be, give people a choice. You have this, you pass a millage, or you put the option on the ballot, you vote to have a full library at $3 million a year with no increase in taxes, with no millage. So you give people, you give people an option.
Further discussion of the motion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
As I look at this motion, and I know that, I think I was the one who said in the budget discussion, five years if you wanted a dedicated millage. I would like to see us move that to six years. And I'd like to see us move it to six years so that the renewal of it would be on a city election. I think this is our issue, and that's where I want the influence, is strictly local. So I would move to amend this to be six-year period of time, 2011 through 2016.
Is there a second?
Support.
Move by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we change the time to, from 2011 to 2015 to 2016. Now, as I calculate, there's an election this November, the council members, and in four years?
Oh, it should have been left to 15.
Yes, in four years, it'll be 15. So I was correct in having it left on 15, because we automatically have. So do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Do you want to withdraw your support?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, guys.
I, I looked at it all the different ways, and I thought, well, we have an election coming up in 2015, and then people can determine at that time, they want to renew that, or they want to change the millage, or, okay.
They can be put on that.
All right, thank you. Further discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howrak?
I will move to amend the resolution to change the date from August 2, 2011 to November 8, 2011.
Support that.
Move by Councilwoman Howrak, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we change the date of the election in the question, the resolve, from August 2 in the resolution to November 8, 2011. Discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howrak?
From a revenue standpoint, it's my understanding that we're going to collect this, if it passes, I mean, if this goes on the ballot, if it passes, regardless of whether or not it's on the August election or the November election, we will actually not receive that money until the winter tax bill goes out and people pay it. And therefore, there is no need to shell out the money for another special election, which is, I believe, not budgeted. And we did that in February of 2010, and showed out the money then. And, you know, then there was the discussion, I mean, to rehash everything, you know, there was a discussion that we couldn't have the Ed Kempin language on in May of this year because of the cost. And therefore, here we go, and we're going to spend money. I believe that Mr. Sarpolis also mentioned to us, we paid him money, again, also unbudgeted, we paid Mr. Sarpolis to come and tell us that the best time to have the election is in November, and we go out and we have it in August. So there's really no downside to having the election in August. If you're going to have a millage question on the ballot, there is a lot of downside to having it in, excuse me, there's no downside in November, but there's a lot of downside in August.
Discussion of the motion? Councilwoman Slater? Amendment?
I think that's about the fifth time I've heard somebody refer to that legal document. And I read that document, and I didn't read that in there. So I'd like the city attorney to respond to that.
Mrs. Bloom?
Madam Mayor, I am aware that it was brought up last week as well, that somehow that that was brought in there, and that there is binding, something binding, as far as not having an election and not paying for an election. That is incorrect. That was not part of the lawsuit at all. Really what the lawsuit did was it brought it to City Council and said that City Council is the one that's responsible for making all of these choices. So it's City Council that needs to decide what to do and how to fund and what their priorities are. So that was really the crux of that. There's no prohibition in having any election from the Kempin documents.
But?
Mayor Olson?
Councilwoman Slater?
Also, for city management, we've appropriated about 90-some thousand dollars towards the library in the next budget, is that correct?
No, between now and June, oh, you mean for?
For?
Keeping the building, yes.
Keeping the library open? So we have?
97.
We have money budgeted that would cover the cost of the election for the library?
Mayor and City Council, that money was the holding cost for the library for the whole year. So a portion of that could be used if it were to pass, whatever, then a portion of that remaining funding could be used for that. But it's, was dedicated towards the holding cost of the building itself for the whole year.
Could be used.
And I have another question for Mr. Zerlag or Mr. Lamorato. If the, if we authorize the bridging of keeping the library open till the election in August, and it passes, would the money that would be used from undesignated and reserved be returned back to the undesignated and reserve fund? Or do we have to have a council resolution and amendment to do that?
I would think that the City Council would decide that at a future budget session.
All right. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilwoman, this is on changing the date from August 2 to November 8?
Yes, exactly.
Councilwoman Fleming?
Another reason to delay this until November, by then, the next couple of months, we're going to know a lot more about what our actual expenses are going to be for 2012 than we do today, based on the negotiations that are in process. We have a much better handle. We may not need as much, or we may need more, I don't know. But we'll have a much better understanding than what we have today if we wait until November, because I think by July, we're going to know, possibly have more funding than we anticipated.
Further discussion of the change in the date for the placement of the election? I think that August is the best timing for several reasons. First of all, it is a clear vote on one issue. It would not be confused with other things that would be on the November ballot. Secondly, the time to bridge keeping the library open would be for the month of July. We would know the outcome in August, therefore could prepare. And the third reason is that this community has asked us, time and time again, to let them have a clear vote on this matter as soon as possible. And as soon as possible is in August. Further discussion of this change? Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I said last week, and my mind has not changed, that the community needs this up or down clear vote as quickly as possible to learn to live where they are. Whether it's up or down, we need to be done with this, and we need to get on with our lives. But as I look to August, and as I was contemplating what I really wanted to do in my heart, this week, I thought about families moving to and from Troy. Families tend to move in the summer. And one of the things that families look for are those learning resources for their children. And if we delay this vote until November, families do not know whether or not they will have that learning resource from the community for their children. Therefore, we will have Troy families considering more actively moving out, and fewer families risking moving in. And in my mind, that will cost us, in property taxes next year, more than the $90,000 we will pay this year for a special election.
Further discussion of the amendment on the change in date, the vote, just on that section, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
No.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
Yes.
Kirwin?
No.
McGinnis?
Yep.
Motion fails. The main motion is before us. Mrs. Bartholomew, the vote?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Howrak?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-4A, the scheduling of a special election for August 2, 2011. I move, resolved at the Troy City Council hereby schedules August 2, 2011 special election for voters to vote on a proposed millage question, questions.
Support.
Move by the Chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kirwin. Discussion of the motion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrak?
No.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I-5 is approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget. Councilwoman Kirwin?
Whereas the Troy Downtown Development Authority has adopted and recommends that City Council approve its proposed fiscal year 2011-12 budget, now therefore be resolved. The Troy City Council hereby approves the Troy Downtown Development Authority's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2012.
Support.
Move by Mayor Protem Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve. The resolution is printed and read. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Howrak?
We have some information from management showing that this authority is going to run out of money. I got to get my year correct here. It looks like in fiscal 2014, based on projections. And of course, there's some variability, because, you know, it's kind of only getting that top piece of the captured taxable value there. What exactly, and there have been some references to ideas that they're going to be bringing forward to us. I'm curious as to what they might be, because, you know, when we have a expenditure or an expense in here for enhanced street island maintenance of $164,000, I'm not sure that that's something we want to do, and we've got an entity that's running out of money. But if I could just get some idea of where we're going with this, because I don't like zeros on the revenue side and numbers on the expense side.
I think that downtown, I'm going to call Mr. Zerlag, but the Downtown Development Authority is looking at all of its options of what to do, because there are bonds that are out there that must be covered. And there are certain things by law that they can do, but haven't reached a conclusion as yet. Mr. Zerlag?
Your Honor, what you said is correct, and to just have a slight extension of options that the DDA has that are subject to the City Council's approval would be, one, to lengthen the term of the DDA and hopefully the term of the notes that are outstanding that we have. Another would be to raise the millage rate in the DDA up to 2 mills. The DDA has that authority to make a recommendation to Council. Council then has that authority to make that assessment. That would bring in about an extra million dollars, plus or minus a few bucks every year. We're also with Mr. Lamorato, Mrs. Bloom and myself, we're talking to consultants that are experts in financial management, as well as an outside legal firm, expert in bond issues. And there may be something we can do in that regard as well, with a possible discount of the value of the bonds. But that's something that we can't really respond to at this point.
And that, 2 mills would be just in the Downtown Development Authority designation area, would not be any residential property?
It would only pertain to properties contained in the dimensioned area of the Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget?
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
I'm wondering in this budget, if they can at least look at some expenditure.